Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us tonight. We are having a study session today with our ordinance department. He will have two sects of this. The first part we're going to go through with is the rat program. I know that there has, you know, we had some concerns from our residents, and it's only right and fair thanks to Councilman Wanso for initially bringing this up. And then thank you to Barb, who actually found the rat issue and actually had a huge, large rat in her home. And, you know, our ordinance department here is Director Bill Dishroom is going to speak to us on the preventative measures that he's going to take and what he's doing. And then we're going to hear back from Barb, too. And look, this is really isn't like, you didn't do this, or you did this, or this is what I found. This isn't pointing fingers. I think this is just finding a way to, you know, to find a collaboration to mitigate things and to work amongst both the city and the residents. Because it's a partnership at the end of the day. If you want to figure out, you know, stop the rodents issue, we can't solely say, you know, ordinance department's failing. No, we can't say the council's not responding. No, there needs to be a line of communication. We did receive something in our mailbox. I'll be honest with you, I probably check my mailbox at the city maybe once every two, three weeks. If you emailed us, you know, that's something that's before us. So I do apologize to Barb and her and her friends.
[inaudible]
Yes, and they were, and I received it in my mailbox, but I didn't see it for about two or three weeks. So had I received it in an email, that's no excuse, but I mean, that's just saying that's why it wasn't on my table at first. You know, in hindsight, you tend to miss these things, but I am going to turn this over to Director Dishroom, who's going to speak. He said he had some talking points. I know he emailed us something. It was a little short late in the day. So, you know, had we seen it earlier, I probably would have went over it, but I'm so sorry. And I know he's busy, but we'll let you just go ahead and start the presentation.
Thank you, Council Chair. I apologize for the delay.
No, it's okay.
I really do.
No, don't let it...
This obviously has been an issue that's come up recently. I just wanted to give some talking points. I sent most of those over to the council, council members. But first, I wanted to start this off with McKinley Street rodent issue, the ordinance action. These are the actions that we have taken. We've actually been in that area for several months. One of the houses in particular, we've been working on, we've had them in court on several occasions, but sometimes the process is a little longer than it should be, unfortunately, but we have to kind of follow the rules. So subsequent to the January, I believe it was January 14th meeting, the department sent several ordinance officers into the area, the rodent issue near McKinley and Annapolis on 116 2025. Ordinance officers posted rodent letters on approximately 54 homes in the area, in that immediate surrounding area. That's generally what we do, McKinley, Roosevelt, and Lincoln Streets, the homes in the immediate area that complain. Ordinance officers subsequently searched for obvious violations in the area, 116 2025. Few violations that were obvious were observed and immediately addressed. After the check of the area on 116, there were several tickets that were issued. The ordinance office received multiple calls from residents around McKinley Street in the general area that had received the rodent letter. Department personnel explained to the residents what the purpose of the letter was. Director Dishroom left voicemails on 115 2025 and 127 25 from Jeff, Mr. Antilac, Jeff Cowboy Antilac, from McKinley Street regarding the updates. Have not heard back from Mr. Antilac as of this reading, actually. The week of 127 25, the ordinance officer assigned to the area checked again for any visible violations around the area of the complaint. None were observed, reported. 129 2025, the officer will be checking the area, or check the area, McKinley property in advance of a court date, as well as looking for other violations. We had two of them that we had issues with in court late last week. The repeat offender on McKinley was scheduled for court last week, and an order will be sought from the court. Show causes scheduled from two weeks from the last court date to seek an order on the property if it's not brought into compliance. The upside is a couple of the, there's some sad news as well, but a couple of the vehicles, the abandoned vehicles from the offending property have been removed since, which is great. And then a follow-up at the repeat offending property in advance of the next court date in mid-February will occur as well, as well as continuing, continued monitoring of that area. That's, that was that. And so I want to go over...
Warning and...
Everything good? We, during this study session, I wanted to point out some things that I think that we can do, some of the things that we've done. So it's important to contact the ordinance department with the complaints so we can log them in BSA, and the inspections can subsequently be done. The department follows current ordinance 7-305 with regard to rodent abatement. The owner is responsible for abating infestation and providing proof of the same if found in violation during inspection. We do a check of the area for obvious violations if we have a complaint in a certain area where it's become an issue, like McKinley, for instance. The officer will check suspected property if the, if the infest, if there's an infest, for an infestation, I'm sorry, if access is granted. In other words, we can't just march onto people's property, contrary to popular belief. We also post rodent letters, brochures, the homes in the immediate area. If a violation, or if a violation is observed, the officer will issue a notice of violation to the residents that are not in compliance, and there will be a letter sent. Tickets sometimes are immediately issued, depending on the circumstances. We try to notify residents first if there's a violation, but if we've had previous contacts, we'll go straight to a ticket. It's important to note that we are unable to go onto property without owner's permission or access to an adjoining property. So a lot of times, we might have a complaint on a property. If we can't see a violation, we can't see rodent holes or a rodent infestation, there's nothing we can do. We have an obligation to respect the residents' rights based upon the current ordinance. And we also must keep in mind that we must establish there are rodents on a property before anything occurs further with respect to an enforcement. Over the last several months, I think I've mentioned this before, over the last several months, I've been meeting with Dearborn Code Enforcement with regard to the rat abatement program and several other different ideas that they have there. We're trying to grow our relationship as, since we are neighbors, and try to learn some of their processes, and conversely, they're learning from us. Dearborn does have a, I apologize if I'm long-winded, I'm trying to go as fast as I can.
You're doing a good job. Keep, keep, yeah, take your time.
Dearborn has Orkin abating, or baiting sewers for rats. They do 400 sewers in the city, as they've recognized as problem areas. The cost is $145,000 per year. So we could potentially contact third parties to possibly bait sewers if necessary, and do residential and commercial properties, an RFP could be done, or an RFP, I'm sorry, could be done, and then the cost, the residents would bear the cost if they wanted to take advantage of that RFP if that was done. I do have one current staff member who is a certified pesticide applicator with the state of Michigan. If you want to get into that realm, Dearborn does have three ordinance officers that do pesticide application, but it's a process, it's costly, they have to be licensed with the state of Michigan. There's a lot, there's a lot of stuff that goes along with that. So we have and will continue to utilize social media, city newsletter, I've posted in there many, on many occasions, that, about how to prevent rodents from coming to your property. There's usually a pretty good write-up in there. I did that in, actually, in the spring of 2024. That was the most recent time I had put in about tips on rodent prevention slash intrusion. There was a proposed blight ordinance that was sent out last October. That's still, still pending, but this would allow us to respond in a more expedient manner on blight and other nuisance slash health and safety issues that contribute to rodent issues. That's the one that was kind of like a hybrid that we got from Dearborn. They do a lot of abatements within three, usually three to 10 days, which is vastly different than the way we do it now because of our ordinance and our process. Some prevention ideas, keep your property clean, free, flee, I'm sorry, clean and free of abandoned vehicles, trash, debris, and keep the grass cut, keep the area around homes and outbuildings, garage shed, free of ground clutter such as brush, wood, trash, animal waste, animal waste in particular, leaves and debris, make sure that all structures are properly sealed and maintained. Any outbuilding should be installed on a cement pad that's with a rat wall, specifically that's a shed. They love to live under those. Like the council chair said, rodents are a, excuse me, a community problem. So let's all work together to try, try to resolve the issues. I did have a slide, I can, it's probably going to be hard to see. I apologize.
You can dim the lights. Can you dim these ones, too? I don't know why you know.
Like I mentioned before, I don't know, can I...
Yeah, just cut them off.
Where'd you hit the light switches? I'm going to show you the video. Hit those two light switches.
He ain't doing it. He ain't touching lights. You can be...
Trying to get it to a good size. I apologize. So these, this is an example of some of the, some of the issues that we've kind of recognized over about the last six months. A couple of them have resulted, one in particular, in the north end, actually, towards the center, it resulted in a, an actual rodent abatement ticket, actually a second ticket, because the person that owns the property did not respond to it. All the other ones are kind of short of the one. There's one in the south end as well, more towards the east side, where there was an issue where there was possible rats at. There was an abandoned, abandoned vehicle, a trash violation, and another concern, I can't remember what it was, but they were taking it for that, to try to, to try to straighten up the conditions that exist. It was, I'm sorry, blight, abandoned vehicle, and waste receptacles and that one. So these are kind of the ones, some of the ones that were kind of on the, on more of a, more of a watch for us. But if you notice, one of the things that I mentioned in the email that I sent to the council is almost all of those are tracking along the creek or watershed.
How close to that is to like water?
They're, they're in very close proximity, most of them are, as you can see. If you look along, along here is where the, where, and there's other, I think there's other smaller tributaries. You can see some, some water along here in the north end, and then down in the south end, I'll try to zoom out a little bit. I apologize for the slide.
No, you should probably zoom in, not zoom out.
Okay, yeah, I can, I guess I could zoom in and then drag it and show you, it'd probably be, well, now it's obscured.
Yeah, you can drag it, drag it, drag it.
But yeah, do you see that? See how close those are in proximity to that, that water? That's where, that's the source of water for them. So I just thought it was kind of funny when, when this came in. So I just wanted to point that out. These are some of the issues that came up that where we've actual, and most of them were unfounded, but we still had a couple that were actual, you know, we thought were issues. So some of them were issued tickets, so. And then my other slide, really quick, is just total number of enforcements. If I can get the, I apologize, I'm having, I've been having problems with my computer. It's been, the screen's been going blank. So not batting a thousand here with this, so.
By the way, those cases that you're showing of the rats in the turn area, when was that done, study done?
This was, I just picked a time, a timeframe to try to present something. I just did something over the last six months. Now, we, like I said, we have to be able to confirm there's an infestation. That's very difficult. There, there might be some that we don't, we don't, we haven't confirmed, but we have to have access in order to confirm those. So it's, it's just, you know, some of those were kind of like standing up.
We've shown that many, it's over six months?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's, that's a six month, I think it went back to August, August 1st.
Council Chair, we had Daniel, our statistician at the department, at the DPD, pull all our stats, go through all the numbers to do as recent as of last week, and all the enforcement actions.
Go ahead, Councilman Wanso.
Actually, I don't think that's, that's many at all, six months. It seems like you, with the rat issue, I'm not saying anything, but it seems like, are those tickets that you issued, those markers, or that's just a problem where you responded to a complaint?
Correct. We, like I said, we wrote one for, there's one for sure that's confirmed rodent, a rodent issue in the north end. And there is one in the south end that, that is, is a problem, but we didn't write for rodent, for rodent harborage. We wrote it for the other three, because they pretty much go hand in hand. You have blight, trash, you know, brush, and it's almost, they're almost an absolute lot. Another, another issue we have is the ground feeding, when people are ground feeding, it draws them in, and then when people don't pick up animal waste. So those are, those are kind of things that draw, draw those in.
Director, you refer several times to rodent abatement. What does that mean? I know it's mean getting rid of rodents or whatever, but what is that, you say that, what do you mean by that?
The, the way the ordinance is written, if we come out, we recognize that there's an issue on a property, there's rodents on the property, we would order them to contact a pest control company. The pest control company would come out and do, do their work and make sure that the conditions have been corrected, they've abated, abated the rat issue, and then the resident would then provide that to us as proof that the, the issues have been mitigated with regards to the rodent. And when I say rodent, that's a, that's a vague, you know, most people think rats, woodchucks, we've had woodchuck issues recently, one, we're talking about one in the office today. There's other, there's other animals, especially in those, you know, the tributaries, the water, where we have the park and the creek in the south end. And anytime there's a disruption, you get some activity as well. I, I think they're working, doing something in the south end, on the creek in the south. I'm not sure, I'm going to go check it out tomorrow, but I'm just, I'm just like cringing, thinking that's going to stir the pot, because they, they like to hang out in.
Now, when you rec, when you, is it an order to get a pest control company out there, or is it a suggestion, or what kind of legal action do we have as a city to make sure that that's what they follow up on?
We would do, we would do the standard, the SOP standard operating procedure where we would write up a notice, try to make contact verbally with the owner of the property, and have a conversation with them, and usually write a notice of violation, and then, and send a, a letter to them as well, to notify them that it's absolutely necessary, give them a certain timeframe to do it. If they fail to comply, then we would write a ticket for pest harborage.
Are videos from neighbors, is that sufficient evidence for you to issue a ticket or a warning of abatement?
Not really, because number one, we don't know who the person is, and that's, a lot of times, people don't want to get involved, and I completely understand that. That's why if we can get neighboring access, we can look and observe them ourselves and write the ticket ourselves. I'm not saying it's harmful, but it doesn't, it doesn't help if you want to, you know, the burden of proof to write a misspelled civil infraction is, is lower, but it does exist, so we have to have proof that they're, because rats travel, they could just be coming to and from, they could be going in somebody's backyard to, you know, do whatever, but that you have to, you have to be able to prove, and you have to be able to elaborate, you have to be able to explain that in court, to the, to the court, that that's, that problem exists. So that would be reason for justifying a ticket. And that, the, the video helps, or pictures, I'm not going to tell you, we haven't used that before, but that, that helps, but it's not a deal sealer per se.
I have a question. How many of these tickets have been to court, prosecuted, and paid for, paid for? Do we know that?
The two that I just, there was one, that when a ticket is issued to an individual, if they fail to appear in court, they'll have a warrant issued for their arrest. That's always a nice surprise. I mean, not really, but the one, I know the one that for the pest harborage is, another ticket was just issued, the first one went to a warrant. The second one I, we set up, it's going to be, it's going to be a court date, instead of just, if you mark it for court date, they have to appear in court. If you don't, they can pay the ticket. The person didn't respond at all the first time, so we wrote the second ticket, and then we can do, if we have to, if it gets far enough along, we can do a show of cause and actually have the judge order them to have us send a company out there and abate the conditions by calling a company in, Orkin or whatever, private company to do that. We haven't done that yet, but we have that.
I think it's important to start rolling your wheels on, spinning the wheels.
Yes.
You know, I mean, like, there shouldn't be one, two, three strikes on this. I mean, if there's a rat issue, you know, I could tell you, like, seeing a rat, you know, passing through my neighborhood. I think I could tell you that seeing a rat through my neighborhood is extremely alarming. Not that I'm saying it's the right thing to do, but I could tell you, I go door to door whenever I see my neighbor who has its blight everywhere, or I threaten him, saying, hey, you're going to see Officer Abbott, and if you do, good luck, because someone's going to go to the next guy. But, you know, the reality is, I think as a community, if we communicate with our neighbors, which I think if you're, you're talking to your next door neighbor, you know, I could tell you for myself, up and down on the neighborhood, or behind me, or maybe even three, four blocks from me, I can, I could probably name almost every single person in every home. And anytime I see Mrs. Johnson's street or her home not cleaned up, Johnson, you need some help cleaning your house? No, I'm going to get to it. Okay, well, let's get to it before the rat problem gets here. And I think if the community within itself, because look, really, at the end of the day, it starts with us. The city is here to enforce, and, you know, our ordinance department, you know, it cannot be every single block, 180 square miles, every single day. It's just not, the reality is, it's not. You know, they're being pulled in so many different directions. But the one thing that's alarming to me is, and I don't mean this by any shape, way, or form, every single person that's in this ordinance department took on the role to say, I'm going to lead, I'm going to take on this position, and we're going to hold people accountable so that the residents can enjoy the proper quality of life for their families. And so when we're hearing things like Barb has a four-foot, I'm going to call it four-foot rat, maybe it was like four-inch rat, but it was, it was still looking like a really big rat. Like, it looked like a, it looked like a cat.
A pregnant cat.
Yeah, pregnant cat. The reality is, that could have been any one of us. We all signed up to say as the director, or anybody from ordinance, or on the council, or on the clerk, or treasurer, or mayor, everybody took a role to say, we're going to, we're going to lead. If that means we, we made those oaths, people like Barb should not be dealing with what they're dealing, people like Mrs. Smith that's down the street should not be dealing with what they're dealing with. And, you know, I'm not here to give a lecture to anybody. The reality is, we are here to lead, and we're also here to express the message to the residents in our community that it starts with us. I'm a resident, before, I'm just a councilman. And, you know, so I know Tom, you know, I've had residents come in and said, Tom knocked on my door and told me, yeah, this truck shouldn't be here. You know, I told the man, I said, Tom told you the right thing. That's just the reality of things, but it can't always be done by a council member. It has to also start with your neighbors. I did an eight-mile bike ride with a resident that comes to our council meetings all the time, Angela Vanegas. We did all, all of Dearborn Heights. I swear, it was so embarrassing. And we stopped at people's homes that we didn't know. We said, you know, what's your biggest concern? And they'd say, look at this neighbor's house, look at this neighbor's house, look at this neighbor's house. I feel like I bother, I bother you guys so much, where I'm just constantly saying, go look at this house, go look at this house, go look at, I mean, there was a time where I sent you in one day, I wanted to show you what I can receive and what I can send to you. And one day, I think I emailed the director 10 homes. These were from 10 different residents on 10 different properties. I don't expect you guys to be everywhere. The reality is, it's impossible, but we need to find a way. And I know there, there are two more positions that we need to fill in the ordinance department. I'm not sure why HR hasn't moved forward on that. Like, the year, in June, we're going to be taking that money, and we're going to be putting it back in the general fund, and we're going to re-budgeting for it. We need to hire these positions.
That's in progress.
What's that?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. That's in the works.
I mean, just...
The old list expired.
I'm excited for it.
Yeah, we'll do it.
We need more gentlemen like we have in the audience today, and I think, you know, the, the ordinance, there are officers that are here with us today. And we have Mr. Bunker, I know we have Mr. Abbott.
Russ, Russ.
And we have Russ. I think me and Russ have spoken through, through the vehicle, but I could tell you that I bother these guys all the time, and I know I bother you all the time. We need to find a solution here. We need to figure out how to mitigate this, and come the spring and summer, nobody wants to see people's homes looking like crap anymore. Issue the ticket. And I don't mean give them their warning. Issue a ticket. Send out a letter saying, everybody's already been put on notice. If we find out your grass is not cut, and your trash looks like crap, you already got your notice. We mailed you guys already. They don't want a ticket. They want to go to court, and if the court starts doing what they, you know, not fixing that part, we'll have those conversations with the court. Go ahead, Councilman Wanso.
Thank you. I had a couple things while you were talking, Director.
My microphone. It's on. There you go. Just speak into it.
A director, no. Yeah. Now, I've, I've got like, one of the things is, they're baiting the sewers. Do you think that's a problem in Dearborn Heights, rats living in the sewers? Or haven't we discovered that yet? And I realize that Dearborn has, I mean, their ordinance department is a lot bigger than ours, obviously, that they have three ordinance officers that are trained in pesticide. I mean, that's, that's the score shows right there. But do you think the sewers is an issue in Dearborn Heights, or is it just running around people's yards and garages?
Without any real facts, I would, I wouldn't make a comment on that. What I would say is that the mayor of Dearborn is very happy with what they're doing over there, and it seems to be working, so something to consider.
Mayor Dearborn's usually around, that's why. Doing a great job.
So what exactly they're doing, I'm sorry.
Is, is dog feces a, a, a Nordance violation?
Yes.
That a neighbor could report?
Absolutely.
And you can go into a neighbor's yard and look at that?
That's the key. Keys to the gate, right there. We got it, we got to have access. And wait, that is one of the biggest things, that it's disgusting, I think everybody knows it, is that dog feces is something that rats love to eat. It's disgusting, I know. But I'm just being honest with you, right?
For sure. So people listening, if you, even if you don't see rats and your neighbor has a yard full of dog feces, please report it, because just because you don't see them, they might be there at nighttime. Please report that. Now, you said something, Dearborn does something in three days, and it takes 10 days for us, and I didn't catch what you said about that.
No, I had reached out to Roger, and we had a blight ordinance that is vastly different than the ordinance that we have. It basically gives the department the authorization, if there's a serious enough violation, to go onto a property and abate it within three to 10 days. That is completely different than what, how we operate now. That has been exchanged again recently. I believe it was sent, I don't know if it was sent to the whole council in October.
Yeah, we sent it out to all of you. And we've put, we've put color to show the changes. I started October, finished it October 17th. We sent it again last week. We just asked for your input to look it over. It covers everything you've been raising, Tom. And I think it gives us more teeth and more power, and a faster, faster vehicle to get things through, but it's, it's up to you to give us your feedback.
And Dearborn utilizes that.
Yeah, that sounds like a good, good thing.
It is, yeah. If you have stuff like that, like the health and safety issues, in particular, those three officers that are pesticide, signed up, like pesticide abatement, if there's a concern where there's dog feces or possible rat infestation, they can go onto people's property to check for that, because it's health and safety.
There you go.
Makes sense, right?
Yeah. I like that. Do you have any issues with renters? Because are you writing the, the person that lives there a ticket, or the homeowner a ticket in this situation?
It's going to be the homeowner.
The homeowner, so then that might be an issue right there.
They're responsible for the property.
Yeah, so I bet you in a lot of cases, the person living there doesn't even pass that along to the homeowner.
That is why, I'm going to get on my stand here, is why it's important for these people that own rentals to have all their information updated, so when we send a letter, it comes to you as the owner of the property, because I've, I've heard it a million times, I didn't get the notice, I didn't get the notice, you didn't update your information. That's not our fault, so.
Well, you're the expert, and I know more ordinance officers would help, and I hate beating a dead horse, but, you know, we approved a couple more. So maybe we can work on that in the future, maybe we can start getting together here and working together to solve all of our problems, not just the rat problem. I know that's a, it's a big issue. I mean, I've had them on my block, I've seen them in the street dead. And it's not, I mean, you see a squirrel in the street, eh, poor guy, you know, and, or any other animal, you see a rat, you go, whoa, it's like crazy, you know, it's, it's just, you know, rats, they're, they're just not cool, and, you know, I know they're hard to get rid of, but I think it's possible. I've talked to someone in Dearborn, and they said they're, they're making a lot of success.
Well, you know, you know what Dearborn is doing, Councilman, if I may, Councilman, Councilman, if I may.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead. Thank you.
Councilman, uh, from what I'm hearing, from what Dearborn is doing, and I just talked to my buddy on Sunday, I said, what are you guys doing? And they said, they said the stray cats. They're, they're saying, bring all your stray cats back into Dearborn. We'll take, we'll take them all. And the stray cats are the ones scaring them off. What's that? Uh, treasurer, uh, Madam Clerk? Yeah. So from what I'm being told is, they're, they're legit, like, having conversations, maybe with the Humane Society, you guys got any stray cats you wanna put them back? Dearborn Heights will take them.
This is something that's come up before. We've been, yeah. We, I, I, it's funny to me, because it's like Dearborn's reinventing the wheel. We've been doing TNR in the city for years. This came up before, and everybody's like, wait, the, the issue, I'm gonna, I wanna refute you, push back a little bit on that, that concept, if I may.
Yeah.
Cats, you're right, you used the right word, because the cats generally do not eat the rats, especially if there's another food source, they will chase them out of the area. So maybe if we can push them over to Taylor or to Detroit or.
I don't care where they go.
It's a joke. I'm not saying they don't eat some of the rats, but from what, from what I've read, uh, they tried that in Chicago, like a pilot program, like, all they did was push them out to other areas.
Outside of Lovegood, and I'm not saying I want rats to die, I mean, look, I'm, I'm an animal lover. Right. It's a rodent, rat, anything. I mean, I really, I'd hate to see anything lose its life. But my, my buddy has a, has a cat that, like, comes in out of the house, and it's by Lovegood on Denwood Street. Every single night, it kills another rat. Kills the rat, brings it, bites it, throws it on, on my buddy's lawn, and he picks it up and puts it in the trash. Every single night, he kills a rat at near Lovegood.
Can we borrow him?
Simon.
I do, I do wanna point something out, and thank you, Council Chair, for, you go and keep going back to that point where, you know, we gotta work together. People have to clean their property up. We can't be everywhere. But one of the things you have to understand too, and, uh, my, uh, my guy, my guys back here, especially Russ, the guy who's certified, uh, will confirm this, is that no matter where you have people, you're gonna have rats. The, the, the thing is, you wanna keep it down to a minimum, right? So by doing all these things and working collaboratively, we can make that happen.
You know, I used to work at, uh, Hesham Market when I was a kid in high school. While I was working there, I was moving the boxes and like a mouse ran through. And this lady had her cart all full. The lady jumped, said, oh my God, there's a mouse. It's a true story. I was a freshman at Crestwood. And she said, oh my God, there's a mouse. And the lady said she no longer run the rest for groceries. And the old man said, I'm mo', I'm mo', in his Boulder accent. He said, you know the White House? They even have rats. And, you know, I share that story, uh, because you're right, you're gonna see them. They're gonna be, they're gonna be amongst where people live. You're always gonna see trash, a bag's gonna fall out, a possum's gonna try to jump in, pull it out, the rat's gonna come eat the rest. But we need to find a way to slow it down.
Mitigate it.
And it starts with the ordinance department and the residents. That's who it starts with, residents and the ordinance department. When, when, if a resident calls in and says, hey, this guy has five cars parked up, they're stacking up their tires, they got all this stuff, we need to start issuing tickets. And honestly, and I would, I would put a solution here right now with the residents. I think this is the best thing forward. You know, you know what we can do right now? And if the council says yes, I'll even add it to the next meeting, a letter from the ordinance department while everybody's put on notice. This year, you have just received your notice. If you do not cut your grass, if we see any things that are double stacked, if we see your trash is overfilled and hanging to the side, you are getting a ticket. This is your notice. Instead of having to say, we gotta give them a notice, write it down, let them come in, fix the problem, then they fix the problem, we drive by, Russ drives by, and he's like, okay, well, they fixed it, and then two months later, they do it again, well, here's the notice. Come back, you know, they fix up the problem, it's the same song and dance. Hit them with the notice from, from, from April. All summer, we're gonna be checking on you. To whom this may concern, honestly, I think that's a, you know, and if they wanna sue us for that, for having their house dirty, let them sue us.
Director?
Yes, I'm gonna go to Councilman Wenzel.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Council Chair. There was a, um, vacant house over on McKinley and a garage that had, that's all been abated. Has it? And the abandoned cars? On McKinley and the.
Yeah, the one we're talking about.
I, yeah, I think that's the one we're talking about. That's, that's the one that I had, uh, when I took over this position, there was a court order to remove that garage. I did that. Again, like Council Chair just mentioned, that you go back to, you know, your, they go back to their bad habits, their old habits, so um, that, that is the property that everybody's speaking of. And again, there's, there's, uh, I think there's some other issues on that property if I am able to get, should be able to get an order next court date. I wanna have that property inspected, because I, there may or may not be a rat issue there. There might be harboring pests there. But we have to be able to get onto the property and confirm that. We haven't been out on the property. We actually had access from a neighbor, but that neighbor moved, so that presented another problem for us. And the other gentleman lives next door, but there is like a six foot privacy fence, so that complicates things. It's harder to see that way. But yes, the garage has been removed, the two cars around there have been removed since. So hopefully, more of the stuff will be removed and it'll stay that way. Now, apparently, the dog that was there before is no longer with us, God rest his furry soul. So that will help, right? I mean, there's no dog feces there. Well, there's probably some still, but we'll, we'll get that when we go out there. So.
And then the, um, people feeding like squirrels, they have our bird feeder and the, uh, feed ends up on the ground and the rats, uh, eat that. How, how much of a problem is that? What, what does the city do, if anything, regarding people hanging, you know, like a bird feeder or something in their backyard?
You're asking the wrong guy about ground feeding. I hate it personally. Um, you're not supposed to do it. We have bird, birds will eat, birds eat, or rats will eat, birds eat. Uh, if we find somebody that we tell them to stop, like if they have a bird feeder, and we usually have them to get a spill tray, so it doesn't, I don't care if people feed the birds, we don't wanna feed the rats. Rats are opportunists, they'll eat anything. Um, so if we have an issue where we tell somebody to stop feeding the birds or to make it to where the, the spill, the spill feed thing is on the bottom of it, so it's not hitting the ground, we, we will, we will be okay with that. But anytime there's, there's an issue where somebody's putting something on the ground by error or omission, they will get a ticket, I promise you.
We have.
We have ticketed. Yes, and it's in the ordinance, yes.
There was a problem with the property on, um, on Monroe. I know this was a few years ago. And then, last question, this about having feral cats out. From the experience you've had, do you think that's realistic at all? To, to just have cat and relying on that?
It may, it may help, but I don't think that's a solution personally. The upside of the, of TNR and the, the feral cats is, uh, it helps keep the population down. Cats are territorial. But I don't, again, I don't feel like it would be, it might be some of the solution if we can get uh, ten thousand of the council chair's friends' cats. We could replicate that cat and have him come into the area. That might, that might be helpful, but. But I'm not saying, I mean, TNR is not.
Getting, getting, uh, rid of abandoned property or properties that's got, you know, uh, food source somewhere there is the main thing, and the animal feces, correct?
Yes, and blight, anything on the ground, uh, garbage, trash, debris, brush, the dog feces, they don't leave, the people, they like to hide under stuff from their predators. They make nests, they burrow into the ground, so you gotta, you have to eliminate spots for them to hide nets. I was just talking to one of the ordinance officers about that. He, he, you gotta, you gotta eliminate all the trash and debris. That's, that's the biggest thing. You can, you can, I think you'd virtually get rid of that, if we could get rid of that. And that, you gotta get rid of the food source, the dog feces, they love that. A lot of times, when you go out on some of these complaints, that's what you see. It's like a direct correlation, so there's blight and, you know, people not putting their, they, they can't, there's garbage on the ground, which drives me nuts. You know, it's, it's just, we gotta, you gotta be, you know, maintain your property better.
Thank you, thank you. I'll say here, Councilman. I'll say. Councilman Wenzel?
Thank you. I noticed the study session, so I'm bringing up a lot of things, because this is the time to do it. You know, I, I know that, you know, in the past, I think it was, uh, one of the streets around, in, uh, they had born a telegraph where about a year ago, rats were coming in and out of the side of a house, and there was video passed around. Can, can we enforce somebody to patch that hole on the side of their house, or? I mean, because I, I seen the video, and that was like one every, you know, minute, you know, going in there.
That's part of the property code. That would be, uh, somebody's obligation as part of home maintenance to maintain, to structure.
Somebody living in their house?
Glaze.
Somebody's living in the house and the rats are going in?
All that, all that stuff.
All space.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's part, they would, they would have to maintain the, the windows and all that stuff sealed tightly, so the, the weather can't, and rodents can't get in. Yeah, that would be something that would be covered in the property code, and probably pest harbages as well. Sometimes we want parlays into another.
You know, I, I, I know that one of the big problems we have, not with just rats and all of our ordinance situations, violations, is, is enforcement. I know that there's times, if someone doesn't, refuses to pay a ticket, they have to go to court, and that could take months, if not like, you know, twelve months sometimes, if you appeal it. I think what we need to do, and I don't, I'm not an expert in court, and maybe, you know, Roger or somebody can, you know, how can we expedite this process where it can be just, you know, a matter of weeks from start to finish? I mean, I think that's what we need to look into. We've always talked about it. And, uh, uh, I think that's, when you can let someone just go on and on for months and months, and they don't have to worry about it, then they, they, you know, out of sight, out of mind, and they don't even think about it. You say, hey, you know, you got till Tuesday, this is the law, we're coming in Tuesday with a backhoe and a dumpster, clean out your yard, or, you know, I mean, we, we need something like that. And that, we leave that up to you to come to, for us with some kind of ideas as far as enforcement goes and work with the courts.
The, I will defend the court. Um, I think they're doing a better, a better job at getting things in, in short order in court. But I could refer back to the, the latest, uh, iteration of the blight ordinance that I mentioned. That has teeth. You can go out instead of writing a ticket and waiting. You follow that three to ten day rule. You post on the property, they don't respond, you go out there and clean it up. Dearborn did about fifty like that last year. I think once people find out we're doing that, they're gonna change the way they act.
I was in no way.
In my opinion.
Bad mouth in the court. I'm just saying, they're, they're probably overwhelmed.
Yeah, they are.
But it's real serious, and rats are serious, but, I mean, they got, they've got, you know, homicides, and all kinds of violent crime and stuff going on.
Right.
They need to address. So, I mean, I, you know, do we need our police to be involved in, in enforcement on some of these issues? If they don't, you know, the police go out there and write them a ticket or arrest them or something?
No, it's not, it's not a misdemeanor. It's municipal civil infraction. If they have a warrant for their arrest, they could be arrested. Like I said, we, if we write the tickets, um, they're usually good about it, but there's, there's the process that you have to go. It's literally like three times before you can do a show cause to go out there the way things stand now. But if you, if we looked at the blight ordinance again that was presented, that's the one that Dearborn uses. They go out and do on, on health and safety. You don't wanna, you don't wanna abuse it, right? But there's times where you should be able to use, utilize something like that in the, in the interest of health and safety.
You think that's gonna be our cornerstone now for these?
I, I said it before, I, yeah, I, I, I think that that would be in- incredible, quite honestly.
Council, Council Chair?
I just have one. Let, let the Councilman finish.
Let me just, um, I was asked if traps are available from the city for homeowners to use. Do we have traps? No?
No, there was an issue with that before, and, uh, we, we, they were, a lot of them were not being returned, and there were some other legal issues, so they, they had the traps, the, the large black traps before that they had baited, but they don't do that anymore. We haven't done that in years.
I, I think there's two solutions to this. They would wrap this up. Only two solutions. You put people on notice in April, and let them know that you have been put on notice, and you start going directly to tickets. Or we change our ordinance. There, there, that's it. You change the ordinance, and you start saying, there's not, we're not giving them three to ten days anymore. Giving you three days. It's seventy-two hours. You can't get it done in seventy-two hours. Good news is, the city's gonna do it, and you're gonna be ticketed, and you're paying for it. That's it.
Council Chair?
Yes.
I raised my hand earlier, but I just wanted to say that we have.
Your microphone.
We, what's that?
Your mic on?
Yeah, yeah. We sent you a draft of the ordinance that Bill and I, not just from Dearborn, we got it from three, I got it from three other cities, including Allen Park. And some, some cities outside that gave, gives us more teeth. If you can get back to us with the changes, within the ordinance that you have a copy of, there's the red, there's the current, red, and even orange to show some other addition. So if you guys can add it to us, Tom, and give us a look at it, then that'll give us a chance to have something, it's already ready, just your input we need.
Thank you.
I think we do both. Notice and change the ordinance. Part, part of interruption.
You like that idea? So you think if we give everybody a notice, we could just start ticking in right away?
I, I think Roger will have a problem with it, but I'm a little more aggressive. But, uh, I think, you know, a lot of times, we, we have issued tickets for, uh, when I say exigent circumstances, I like to notify people first because they will come to court and complain. They, I know, I, I don't disagree.
We did, we notified.
Yeah, we gave you a ticket, right? I, I mean, we, we've done that before, so.
You know what?
I, I'm not, I'm not afraid of it. I, I don't, I don't have a problem with it, and I think we should, uh.
You know what I think we can also do? I think you could do this for a couple of months, so we can even try it out just for the summer. Send out a mailer once a month where you're being put on notice. Everybody's gonna be put on, even if, even if your house looks good, they're still gonna be like, what? What did I do? They're gonna go out and just start cutting the grass again, start cleaning up again. Then they get it again in a month, they're like, what? Somebody must be calling on me. Let me clean it up, let me do it again. And I, and I swear, and like, I think Councilman Wenzel said, out of sight, out of mind. You can, you put this in front of people all the time. They're gonna think twice, and they're gonna go out and they're gonna do the work.
Council Chair, thank you, thank you, Council Chair. So Director, I know you mentioned if they don't comply, you'll send somebody, or we send somebody to, uh, to the backyard or whatever, to, to the abatement, but, I mean, what about if there's something we need to go inside the property? Do we still have to go through court, correct?
Yeah, we, we don't do inspections inside of, inside of the home. That would be the building department that would do any type of inspection that needed to be done inside the home. Is that your question?
So my question, as you said, if they don't comply by calling the pest company, we can send somebody to take care of it, and we'll send them the bill, or we add it to the taxes. So what if the problem is from inside the home, like Councilman Wenzel had mentioned, then we have to go through the court, and that's gonna take some time too. Is there something we could do with the court to expedite that, or?
Yeah, we do, actually. We, we do, um, emergency, um, removals. We've done, we just had.
How, how does it work? Like, they send an officer to just break the door down, or?
You know, to kick the door in.
We, we, we've not, we've never, we've never, are you talking with respect to pest harbage, or?
We get an order to enter the premises and, and, and abate the nuisance. And that means entering the property. Like, when the court does evictions, they'll have their court officer go out and evict it. In fact, we just had one the other day. And then we had the exotic fish that we had to find a place for, you know, throwing the tenant out. So they go in, it's just that, you know, the court has its system before I came here that, um, of the three times, I'm more aggressive, and I, I did the abandoned properties project for Mike Duggan when I came in two thousand, and streamlined that, to me, ninety days instead of a year and a half. I love being aggressive. Bill is aggressive and his officers. We do have to work in constraints and with due process considerations, but that ordinance we've given you, we ask, give it back to us, let us work with it, and let's move on.
Thank you, Roger. That, that stuff, that, but I'm saying if, so if the court sends an officer, that's an extra expense too. Does that be added to the bill?
Taxes. In fact, we have, we've been, we, we collected fifteen thousand, um, on three enforcement actions on default. Because what I did now is we streamlined it, that when, when they posted default on the property after the thirty days, we take it over to the controller's office. I worked out a system with the controller. They get an invoice, they walk across the hall to the treasurer, and they gotta pay. When they pay it, the default is removed. Otherwise, it's on their taxes.
Thank you, Roger. Director, I know early you mentioned that the mayor of Dearborn is happy with the ordinance department, whatever they're doing. But I, I think I missed something, so whatever they're doing is the three or ten days you mentioned, or?
They utilize that, but what I was referring to specifically, when I mentioned, uh, the mayor of Dearborn, he's happy with their um, abatement program with regard to the, uh, sewers. He's, they, they spent a lot of money, they abate, they, uh, abate, I think it's four, uh, four hundred, and the cost is about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year, and it sounds like they feel like that's money well spent.
There's something to look at, then, I guess, this budget season too.
Maybe we don't need four hundred, but maybe, you know, half. Spend seventy thousand bucks, and it eliminates the problem.
Do we, do we need some kind of inspection first, just to see exactly how our sewer's looking? Like, are they like a home for the?
They, yeah, that's, that's a, it's a problem. I think that, I'll have to double check with, uh, Rinal, the code manager from Dearborn. But I think that a lot of their, um, they tag the, the areas that they thought were the hotspots, and that's where they put the, the bait in, the sewers at, in those particular locations. But I'll have to double check. I don't know if they had the company come out and look and, you know, see, if they, they did an inspection and said, yeah, this, we're gonna do this, 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 this. Or if it was, uh, the way they.
So if we need to do an inspection, do you guys do that inspection, or we have that company do that inspection?
But, yeah, my guys would not do that.
Would not do that. So probably we have to send it for our beds, to have a company just inspect the sewers first.
Yeah, if that's the way it's done, let me, let me do a little more research on that.
Please, yeah, let's do that.
I spoke with them briefly.
And bring it to us, because I think we need to move forward with this. Maybe we can, at least we can, you know, get it done before budget season, so maybe we can add it to the budget.
Well, Council Chair.
Thank you, Director.
Go ahead, Councilman.
So with Dearborn, the way Dearborn does it is that anytime they tear up a street, that's where the issues with rats were coming from, in the actual sewers. that's where their issues with rats were coming from and the actual sewers themselves, not people leaving because Dearborn aggressively, ordinance, they're out every day ticketing. While when they tear out a street to redo their sewer lines, their mains, that's how they pinpoint the hotspot because rats start coming out of the sewers when the lines are open, when they dig out the streets. And for inspections, they give that area that they did the streets in to Orkin and the team from Orkin goes out and they do what they do for the city. That's what they get charged for. Dearborn's main rat issue is from, from the CSO separation and street replacement program.
Council chair. Yep. I mean, a sewer, you know, people don't realize there's, there's hardly any water in a sewer pipe. Just a little bit trickles down through there and it's, it's basically like a race, raceway for the rats to travel from one spot to another, probably, I imagine. I can't see them living in the sewers. I mean, but they, if they travel there a lot, that'd be a good place to feed them some poison for sure, you know?
Like what we see in the movies.
Yeah.
It's like Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles.
Yeah. I wanted to, I just wanted to let everyone know that we, that we referred to releasing feral cats and I was educated a little bit that Dearborn Heights has the, it's the TNR trap neuter and release. So if you, if you get a report about a stray cat, we trap it and have it neutered at the Humane Society, which will be, according to the next topic, but, and then release it in that general area.
Uh, yes, right back into, I believe it's within a block or two. It's in close proximity where the animal is.
Been doing that for a while. I mean, do you think we, we need more? Like, like, like Councilman Baydoun asked, you know, is, is, could it help to, you know, to, to get extra neutered cats and bring them in or? I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just grabbing.
Yeah. I'm not going to argue with you, but I, I don't think that's a viable solution.
You don't think so? Okay, that's fine.
We got, I think we're as strays as it is.
Yeah.
Honestly.
Do, yeah.
We do, and that's my, my opinion on that. Yeah. I won't disagree with you. Uh, like I said, council, the council chair has a friend that has a cat that's a-
I imagine it could get to a saturation point sometime.
Yeah.
Point, yeah. Does, do any of your officers have anything they want to add? I mean, they're, they're kind enough to come here. I mean, you get to step up to the podium if you want to talk.
Do you want, do you want to speak, Russ? All right. Russ, this is Russell Orman. Russell is the one that's certified by the state pesticide applicator. There's a 7A and 7D, which is vertebrate and invertebrate. And then, is that it?
And then the general.
And then the general. So he has a-
Good evening. Thank you all for asking me to come up and talk. I've been listening to a bunch and a lot of your questions in particular kind of all dovetail into the same thing. To one point, yes, rats do live in the sewers and it is a, a common thing just in any public sewer system. There's, there is enough water. They can survive on a surprisingly small amount. Uh, there's obviously a disgusting food source and in particular, as it's underground and well sheltered, there's limited access from any sort of predators. So they'll actually breed more often down there where they're safer. Disgusting, but safer. Overall, and including the, the feral cat population as a predatory source, including clearing out the yards, including the construction projects like Dearborn's, uh, street projects and construction, the term that pesticide industry uses is integrated pest management or IPM. That means that all these things are taken into account together. There's no one single approach that's going to drastically affect the numbers by itself. You include all of these different aspects at the same time, trying to limit as much activity as possible. Having a population present in the sewers, uh, the Dearborn program is very interesting. I didn't even realize that they did that and that definitely gets to them at their highest concentration. Clearing out the yards, it's amazing from just what I've seen when I'm called out for people just asking for advice. It's become kind of common knowledge amongst the citizens of Dearborn Heights. I used to work for critter control before I worked here. So I get called for a lot of questions on groundhog activity, possum activity, whatnot. And a lot of folks don't realize how much just the untended spots in the backyard, the old trailer behind the shed that you haven't moved in four or five years and you keep needing to, makes a vulnerability. You might not have rodent activity, you might have it and they're just that good at hiding it. Being a complete prey species, they have to. It's their survival skill. Burrows underneath things. We've moved single plywood boards and had them just absolutely scatter. When you looked at the map that councilman, or sorry, that director Deschun put up there, you saw just those few little spots, that's where the activity is strong enough that we're really noticing it. There could be all sorts of additional hiding spots around and just kind of dovetailing it all. All of this is stuff that we need to step up on ourselves as well. I'll tell anyone that calls us in, please keep calling in more complaints. It's what our job is here for. And just getting the knowledge out to everyone, what to look for, what to do to prevent, how many of even our little ordinances like the grass notices primarily do more to help against pests than any other issue the city tries to fix, like that's one of the biggest goals for almost every ordinance that we enforce. So, yeah, just putting all of these ideas together would be an excellent program.
Thank you. Let's get some sewers going.
Officer Bunker, would you like to say a few things?
He can.
I'd still like to hear, I'd still like to hear from you. And I, and I asked from, you know, Officer Bunker, he's somebody that I tend to call and anytime there's an issue, he usually has like this whole philosophical reasoning behind it. So I'd like to hear from you on that.
I don't know if it's that deep. The biggest issue that we have, especially when it comes to blight or backyard issues is we're held to the same laws as the police department unless there's a extenuating circumstance, we have their permission, there's a warrant, or we hear somebody in the backyard screaming, help me, we're not allowed to just walk into people's backyard. So if you're calling in complaint, a complaint in the backyard of, you know, they've got a six foot pile of debris and yard waste behind their garage, if we can't see it, we can't do anything about it.
You take your phone and just go?
Are you that tall? I mean, we got one 6'2" guy. He can look over a privacy fence, but, but the other part of it is, is you've got to let us in your yard to see. It happens all the time. We get people complaining, yelling at us, why haven't you done anything about this? Well, can I come into your yard? Oh, I don't want to be involved. You're involved, you're calling. That's the biggest part of it. Dog feces is going to be your biggest food source for the rats themselves. I just had to write a ticket myself to a gentleman, uh, over by Beach Daily for the same thing. Everywhere, everywhere. His excuse was, oh, well, I forgot about it. No, you can't do that. Rats are going to congregate higher along water sources, like the Ecorse Creek and, uh, through the south end and through the north end. It's just, they travel faster and farther with it.
You know, I was in Military Hills a couple of days ago and this thing looked like a freaking, looked like a lion. It was a mouse.
They get pretty big, yeah.
It was, it was, it was, I swear to you, I thought it was a raccoon. Said, no, and it was living inside the, uh, the creek right behind Military Hills. And I said, you guys got million dollar homes in this neighborhood? What do you got this?
Normally a rat will only go about 100 yards from its burrow to get food. When you add a water source like that, they can go for miles.
This thing was big.
Yes.
It was like a cheetah.
So go catch-
An elephant.
It was, it was the size of an elephant, but as fast as a cheetah.
Yeah.
Crazy.
Uh, ground feeding is another big issue. It does happen. Your everyday citizen that's going to have one bird feeder, it's not really going to be your issue. It's when they got six, seven, eight bird feeders out there, they're throwing seed and stuff on the ground. I've walked up on residences that have, I think the lo, the weirdest one was shrimp and shellfish in their garage because, or on the-
Hot dogs.
What's that?
Hot dogs.
Hot dogs, yeah. Uh, because they wanted to give it to the animals.
What is wrong with people?
I had one gentleman on Clipper called. He wanted to complain about rats in the neighbor's backyard. I went to go look, I couldn't find any issue. I went to his yard to knock on the door, hey, can you show me where it is? He had 10 pounds of bird seed in his backyard all over the ground.
Yeah.
There's your rats. Right there. It is an all encompassing thing. It's not just one issue is going to fix it and we got to come up with a multifaceted attack.
So rats eat seeds too?
They'll eat anything.
They're eating, they're eating-
Our wires.
Bird feed, yeah.
Oh, yeah. They'll eat anything. They're opportunistic. They're, they're, they're omnivores. They'll, they'll eat anything as, as, they'll eat you if they get a chance.
They would.
They would chew through the dumpster and some of ours black are rat.
Yeah.
Right through the dumpster, a big old hole.
The big, the big one now is, uh, new car manufacturers switched to soybean wrapping for their wires. So now rats are going after that.
Oh, nice.
That's nice. Yeah. Did you guys hear about the story on, uh, Ford Road and Ken Center Road? Really nice car wash. There was rats in the, in the, in like the ceiling, chewed the wires and-
Yep.
Being lit up on flames. Now they had insurance. That was Ken, it's not Dearborn Heights, but I just remember watching it on the news.
Oh, it's everywhere.
They shut down the entire street.
Rats are at a pandemic, rats are at a pandemic level across the country. It's not just us.
Yeah.
I think I'm good.
Yep.
Okay.
You know, why don't we send out our, our newsletter, let there be an envelope attached to it. And it says in big letters, you've been put on notice. If you do so and so, or you were just letting you know, you're being put on notice. If we feel that there's any blight in front of your home, you're going to be issued a ticket.
Consider this your fir, consider this your first warning.
Exactly. Nice haircut, councilman. Wenzel.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
So Officer Abbott.
Sir. Abbott?
People really, and I know the cat community is strong, but if we're going to have and we might have more feral cats, stray cats in our neighborhood, you need to stop feeding them. Because if you're going to feed the cats, they're not going to go after the rats.
Oh.
Because like every animal, they're kind of lazy. If you're feeding them, why should they chase rats? Also, another thing I come across a lot and I get rat calls multiple times, say, um, someone sees a rat at Rose Telepi's place. So just because they saw a rat at Rose's place, that rat was probably just passing through. It's going from A to B, but there's something in the area or someone in the area and multiple times, rat's not going to hang around unless it's got something to eat. So it basically needs food, shelter and water. But you're never going to eliminate the rats. I was reading about during the coronavirus, everything shut down. All the restaurants shut down. Rats were having a hard time. So they ate their young to survive.
They what?
They ate their young.
Eat them.
Sorry, my English accent.
We know you, man.
Yeah. They will literally kill their own young and they will eat other rats. So unfortunately, we're never going to eliminate it. But if people just clean up their property, that's half the battle.
Right there.
Just be neighborly and help your neighbors if they're elderly, just clean it up. If you're a pig, we're going to come after you. We're going to ticket you. If I've already give you a warning for blight, I'm not going to give you another warning. I'm going to give you a ticket because I've already told you. This can't continue. People need to clean up their properties and be like it was back in the day where everybody had pride of ownership. That's what we need. That's it.
Thank you so much. Council chair. Kevin, say step for, I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott.
Council chair. Um, I know we have in Dearborn Heights, like you already said, we have residential areas and commercial areas. Is there any difference in the rat problems between those two or basically the same? And do rats eat grease?
They eat everything.
I'd say they, I would, I would say, yeah, they, they eat everything. We, uh, sorry, sorry.
If it's organic.
Yeah, if it's, if it's organic, they'll, they'll eat anything. We don't have a lot of commercial complaints. Most of them are residential. I'm not saying they don't exist, but I can't think of any off the top of my head, so.
Honestly, I can tell you this. Somebody has a couple of businesses in the city. I, I truly don't have a rat issue in the plaza that I'm in. I didn't have it at the ice cream place. I don't believe the strip post had anything. And then my place on, uh, Clover Mortgage also doesn't really see, I don't see them in the back of the alleys. I really don't. And you know what's not in any of those alleys? Water. I'm starting to really now, like the more I ponder and think of this, like, it's, it's probably coming from like the places of the area, from like, uh, the Military Hills that has that creek, the, the, the south end that has that creek, the River Oaks, uh, area that has that creek. It seems like anywhere there's water, that you're right, that's where it's really stemming from. Maybe we can look into a company that can come in and, you know, spray our, or maybe they are coming from our sewers closer to the waters. Cause I can tell you when it's cold outside, they have to be going somewhere and they're not entering into everybody's house like Mrs. Bar. They're, they're probably entering up in the sewers. If we can spray our sewers and get them to be, that can also be a great way. And this was in the winter you had the si- issue, correct? I don't think they hibernate. Can you get up and speak to the mic if you don't mind?
They don't hibernate, do they, rats? Yeah. 24/7.
They enjoy the four seasons. That's what they have, Michigan's. An issue like we have to discuss.
Your question again?
My question was, this happened to you in the winter, correct?
In the house it was in the winter. In the summertime, you can see them in the yards.
I believe I've been to your home.
You probably have.
I have, I've been to your home.
Yeah, mhm, yeah. And, um, I never had this problem. I'd been there forever, you know, way back when. And we never had that problem, but it seems like now they just multiply all over the place. And believe me, once you have a rat in the house, you don't even know where you want to sit. Because they're all, it's just, it gives you a creepy feeling. And I didn't realize that. I lived with that visitor for four weeks. I thought it was a mouse. And then I did get, uh, company to come in. And it wasn't cheap, but I, I couldn't live there. I was going to put a sign on this, on the corner saying, "House for sale," you know? It was just too much. One thing I wanted to ask, is Bill still here? Um, when you called me, I had mentioned to you that I thanked you for sending out the letters to the residents about, we're having a problem. And I asked you if you could send it to the south side because on my street, I'm right across from Annapolis and McKinley, on the corner, um, we didn't get any kind of letters. And we do have people that are having problems there too. They travel. And I live on a corner and I don't know where all these dog walkers are, but they come and, you know, I'm in the house and I see them and they're very kind with their plastic bags, but they don't, some of them don't use it. So it's like, um, there's a problem. Just a little reminder, you know, like you had mentioned. These are things we have to look out for each other, just a reminder.
Really, it goes back to what you just stated. We got to look out for each other.
And I'll tell you, the best place to live is on McKinley. We have a group of people that love each other. They take care of each other. I wouldn't be there yet, but I got neighbors that take care of me. If there's snow on the ground, they shovel it. You know, I try to keep my place nice and clean and neat, but then we have to do it together. And, um, the only reason I came here was making people aware we have a problem. Because you don't want it to multiply.
No.
No, mhm, okay.
Thank you, Barb. Round of applause to Barb for bringing us together on this one.
Thank you, sister.
Any, anything else here? I know we have another study session, so I am going to open it up to public comments, uh, next.
Councilor Chair, I just wanted to say one quick thing. I mean, I, I think that this was a great study session, you know? And I think this is just the tip of the iceberg as far as talking and getting, solving more problems. And we, we learned a lot of stuff. The ordinance department was out in McKinley Street and they did a really cool, they went up and down the streets and they got rid of some vehicles and unfortunately, some, some other, some animals were, you know, aren't around anymore. But, um, they, you know, the squeaky gear gets the oil, I guess. So, you know, if you're out there and you have an issue, please, you know, report it. So we, these fine gentlemen and ladies can, can get out there and take care of the problem for us.
Thank you, Councilman. I agree. I'll just echo that. This was a great meeting. And I think it came back down to, you know, really the leadership of the director who brought in his staff with him today. Brought in, uh, you know, the ordinance officers who are on the ground day in and day out. This is, this is an example that every department should really look back and when we have these meetings, come, show up. Show up. Everybody should show up. Including the mayor. I expect it to be, you know, moving forward to every single meeting, the first thing I'm going to say is, mayor, show up. Fortunately, he was sworn in and our charter allows that, or else I'd be the first one to defund him. But Director, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. This has been amazing, honestly. Uh, it's been very enlightening and I appreciate everybody's comments and I appreciate your support. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. We do have one from the, uh, on Zoom before we take it over to the audience. I'm going to go, I'm going to turn it to Zoom first for any questions before we start our second, uh, study session. I see we have Barb Ra, Barbara.
Yes.
Hi, Barbara. Please state your name, the city you reside in and the street that you live on.
Barbara Sopierski, Woodford Circle, Dearborn Heights.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
We certainly want to, we, we certainly want to get rid of the rats. However, I would caution against using widespread poison in our sewers. They don't necessarily kill the rats instantly. They sicken them so that they're easier to be caught by their natural predators. And then you kill the natural predators when they eat a poisoned rat. That would include cats, owls, hawks, coyotes and even possums. And you keep mentioning that they're around streams. And that's also where these natural predators live. Also, the cost seems pretty prohibitive to me to put all that poison in the sewer. I don't think, um, Officer Abbott has a cat. Uh, because my neighbor's cat will catch a mouse. Thankfully, we don't have rats and bring it as a gift. They don't have to eat the animal or the rodent.
That is correct. And my buddy's cat does the same.
Exactly. So, um, the feral cats are not really feral cats, they're community cats if they're being fed by a, um, somebody in the TNR group. Um, but I would caution against using the poison. So that's what I wanted to comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I will just echo a few things on Barb. I have a good friend of mine that actually lost her pet because of a rat poison. They lost their dog. The dog was three years old. Uh, they were, um, it was near, I believe, a sewer in Farmington. And the dog was sniffing. A few hours later, started to vomit. And they came to realize that the dog actually was poisoned. And then when they found out that she sniffed the sewer, the dog actually died. I mean, I don't know how often this happens. It could have been a very rare scenario, but she stands correct. I, I, I worked with, uh, Janelle Chibe who lost her dog that way. And I remember we used to send pictures of, because we have very similar looking dogs. And she like put this whole thing on how she lost her dog. And when I asked her, she said, uh, there was, there was something happening at the apartment complex where they sprayed the sewers to prevent rats. And the dog sniffed it that day and the dog ended up dying. Uh, Councilor Chair, I don't know if, uh, I don't want to, I don't want to go into the back and forth. It was just an opinion. It's our residents. They can say what they'd like. Anyone else in the audience? Rose Trepepe, Tulane Street. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in and the street that you live on.
Dearborn Heights, Rose Trepepe, Tulane Street. I just want, I know the ordinance people get nothing but complaints and I'm one of the worst ones for Mr. Abbott. But I have to say this. I have been so upset for the past two years. The lawn never gets cut, the leaves don't get picked up, the snow doesn't get removed. I don't know what he did. But it's the first time in two years, they clean the snow, they rake the leaves and they're decent. But he hasn't really seen the backyard. He can get in my yard anytime. And that's why he said the rat went through my yard. It didn't stay. It went on either side of me. But I wanted to thank them. And Bill, they're doing a good job. Thank you, Mr. Mo.
Thank you so much, Rose. I mean, if you're getting compliments from Rose, round of applause to you guys. Anyone else in the audience?
Counsel, if I may, really quick, just to address, uh, Barbara's concern.
I, I will have to still have you since it's public comments, state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Uh, I, Russ Ortmann, I actually am a resident of Livonia, just an employee of Dearborn Heights.
That's okay, fine.
Um, but just to address, uh, that is a legitimate concern with certain pesticides or rodenticides and particularly older chemicals such as what was commonly called fly bait. Um, accredited companies such as Orkin use a type of material that is in a concentrated pellet block, is regulated by mass such that a predatory animal eating the target pest would have to ingest an incredible volume. So while the, the secondary poisoning concern is legitimate in certain circumstances and particularly for folks that find old stuff kind of behind the counter stuff that wouldn't legally be sold normally, it's not what would be used by an accredited company. So in the case of Dearborn, or if the city looks into it, that would not be the class of pesticide that we would be looking into.
Thank you so much, Mr. George. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in and the street that you live on.
Hi, I'm Renee Murna and I live in Annapolis in Dearborn Heights.
Thank you.
So I have to say the flyer that comes out all the time, that, you know, the little brochure that comes out. I learned from there that I should be putting a tray underneath my bird feeder. So, um, a few years ago, I had a problem with rats in the neighborhood. And, um, I started putting a tray under the bird feeder and I haven't had a problem with them. So those flyers are worth the money that you guys put into it. And, um, I, uh, agree with the lady talking about people walking their dog and not picking up. I've offered people bags many times. "Do you need a bag for that?" And then they're like, "Uh, uh, okay, sure." You know, so I keep bags in my car just in case. But as far as like, I know, Mo, you're real excited on, on this and you just want to choke all the residents, but I don't think that's going to work.
I don't want to choke no residents.
Yeah, well, you know, you want to, you want to go for it and ticket them. And I think that if we, you know, sometimes when you guys send out notices that are in envelopes, you know, most people probably won't read them. But if you had a nice postcard with the big word rats on it, they would read the postcard and just say, "Hey, some things you need to know," and put five bullet points on there and say, "Hey, this is, this is what you need to know, you know, bird feeder, no open dog food, sitting around," you know? And I, and I learned too, if you don't feed them, they, they generally pass through and go somewhere else. So whatever you're putting out there for any animal, you know, if you don't feed them and you don't put it on the ground, they won't pass through. I was thinking about putting a hawk stand in my backyard, but then I thought, oh, those poor little doggies in the area. Nah, in case they want to go after the little doggies. I won't, I won't put a hawk stand in there.
No, don't do that.
That's it. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. All right, anyone else, anyone else from the audience? How you doing, sir? Corner House, Annapolis Street.
Yes, you got it, Mo. Thank you. Dick Fetzer, Dearborn Heights, McKinley. And I talked to you quite a while, my wife and I talked to you.
Down on your porch?
So, yes. And I do want to say one thing about the ordinance people. They did a hell of a job responding to this last meeting, getting those letters out the very next day. I was shocked. And I also want to say they did a nice job on the one, I know, I'm not supposed to say the address, and the house that we've all reported on with the problems. They got rid of the two cars. They're moving to do some more work on it. And I do, do think they're doing a heck of a job. I do want to say one thing about the wires that somebody said, one of the ordinance people said. The wires on the cars was actually started by Henry Ford, Ford Motor Company. Started growing beans over on, uh, Ford Road and, and, uh, Greenfield years ago. And they use that product in their wiring. And all the cars do it now. And I had two Cadillacs that were almost completely ruined by rats chewing on those wires. So that was years ago. I've got the problem resolved. I have a, uh, exterminator come out three times a year at my cost, but I haven't had any problems on my property with rats or mice, so. Good job by the ordinance people.
Thank you so much. That's another round of applause to our ordinance department. Sometimes it's so good to be able to hear from our residents that are like, "Hey, man, this was being done. This was great work." And, you know, just showing a little bit of gratitude. I, I mean, you know, it goes a long way. And so I appreciate that. Corner of McKinley in Annapolis, yes. Good man.
Thank you.
I, I sat on his porch for about 30 minutes with him and his wife. I enjoyed the conversation between his wife more. You know, about the old bar and what we did all the time, yeah. I got a memory of an elephant, Lynn, I told you. That was two years ago. Any other discussion? If not, we are going to break for a quick five minutes and we'll start our second session. Thank you.